Mr. Nanki.
Here.
Mr. Dickey.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Mr. Benard.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Karaviev is absent. Chair McCoy.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Lewis, you have a motion here on additions and -- oh, we don't have it, do we?
We don't have it.
We have no additions and deletions. Do you have any public comment?
We need to approve the special meeting agenda.
We have no public comment? Commissioner Lewis, you need a motion on approving of -- approval of the special meeting agenda?
Yes, I approve, uh...
No, move.
I move.
Seconded by Commissioner Lewis.
Let him make the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Benard to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. There are no additions and deletions to the agenda. There are no public comments. So now, Commissioner Lewis, we need a motion for approval of a consent calendar.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Benard to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes.
Excuse me, Chair McCoy, perhaps we could...
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. Perhaps we could inform the public of what was on the consent calendar.
Which was the one item?
Yeah.
The one item that was approved on the consent calendar was an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Salem and the Salem Housing Authority of the City of Salem to extend the term of property management services by the Salem Housing Authority for a city property owned at 6526 Darrell Drive Southeast.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. There be no more business to be had. This meeting is adjourned. Okay, now we call to order a special meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem. Recorder call the roll.
Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoy.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Benjamin.
Here.
Board Member Benard.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Peterson is attending by phone.
Okay.
And I'm on the phone.
Hello, Mayor, how are you?
Hello, I'm well, thank you.
Good. Don't get a sunburn while you're listening here.
I'm good.
Member Nanki, could we have a motion for approval of special meeting agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move approval of the special meeting agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency for March 28th, 2016.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Nanki, seconded by Councilman Benard to approve the special meeting agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. No reports? Reports of boards, commissions, and committees? We have none. Public comment? We have somebody here, Chuck Lee. Hi Chuck, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
That's right. You got three minutes. After two, the yellow light comes on. After three, the red light comes on.
All right. I'll watch it carefully.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to all of the commissioners and Mayor Peterson. Hope you're having a good time wherever you are. I just wanted to come by this evening. I think many of you, I've talked to many of you about the Career Technical Institute. First of all, my name is Chuck Lee. My address is 69... 6316 Hogan Drive, Kaiser, Oregon. And I'm the president of Mountain West Career Technical Institute, which is located in the old Nielsen Manufacturing Building on 3501 Portland Road Northeast. And we're right in the middle of the North Gate Urban Renewal District. And I just wanted to come tonight to extend an invitation. If any of you have questions about our proposal, we have met over the last couple of years, really, with that advisory board out at North Gate. And at their last meeting, they made a unanimous recommendation to include us in the plan. And so we're very excited about that because it'll allow us to leverage dollars from urban renewal to new market tax credits, which will complete our dream of establishing this 150,000 square foot facility out on Portland Road in a partnership with the Salem-Kaiser School District. This is a unique public-private partnership that doesn't exist anyplace else in the state of Oregon or the United States as far as we know. And it could be replicated if we can get it up and going and successful. I put at your tables three different pieces of material for you. One is our brochure that we're using right now to attract students for next year's programs. We started with construction and manufacturing this year. Next year, we're adding 3D technical design and television production. And on top of that, we've had construction and manufacturing. The other piece of information that I shared with you is an article that appeared in the Oregonian on Sunday that talked about how well-positioned Salem is with our demographics of young people in this community to be better positioned than Portland in developing a great workforce and attracting businesses to our community. The third item I gave you is the front page of the Statesman Journal that was out a couple of weeks ago. I think it was just about a week ago that talks about that. So basically, I'm here tonight, I know you'll be talking about the Urban Renewal District out in North Gate. I wanted to make sure that you knew that I'd be more than willing to meet with any of you at any time if you have any questions or if you want to see the facility. I know I've talked to many of you already, but I extend an invitation to come out and take a look at it before your next meeting. And I'll be back here on April 11th when you consider it. So thank you for your time and appreciate your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. I haven't had the pleasure yet of visiting the institute. And I will hand my card to Maureen here. And if you could give me a call at your convenience, I'd love to come out and see it and take a tour. Thank you very much for the good work you're doing.
Thank you very much. I'll give you a call tomorrow. We'll see what you set something up.
Councilor Benard.
I have had, actually, an opportunity to go out there. I welcome the rest of the community to volunteer, to become mentors to some of the students out at the Career Technical Institute.
That's right. You are a mentor, aren't you?
I am a mentor. And I haven't been able to partake as much as I want so far this year. But I assure you, it is high on my list that I think my generation is the one that should be mentoring the up-and-coming generations beyond us. I applaud everything that you're doing out there. In fact, I have a close friend who's, as far as I know, hiring one of your graduates this year. In fact, I think he was interviewing one of your students just this week in the construction business. So I'm glad to see the education move on and something happen and kids learn and be able to make a livable wage in this community.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. And just another piece of information, on May 2nd, we're going to have a job fair. We had talked to a lot of different businesses about the idea of doing mock interviews. They said, "We don't want to do mock interviews. We want to hire your kids." And so it's going to be a job interview. And we looked a place, about 50 or 60 kids this summer at a minimum. So it's very exciting that's going out there. And again, the literature I gave you talks a lot about some of the success that we're seeing. But what makes this strong? I'm not taking too much time. What makes this strong is it's a public-private partnership. There's no way the Salem... I'm on the Salem-Kaiser School Board. And there's no way that the Salem-Kaiser School Board could provide a facility like this. And there's no way that we could provide a facility like this if it wasn't for investments from the community. Mr. Takarsky's invested a lot of money to get this up and going. But we've got support from corporations, foundations, industry, and businesses that are all stepping forward to make this possible. So what started out as an effort on the part of Mountain West to give kids hope is doing that. But secondly, we're finding, like you mentioned, that this community has a lot of job openings that aren't being filled right now. And we've got a whole generation of people like myself, baby boomers who are retiring, and we don't have people to replace them. 60% of the PGE linemen are going to be retiring in the next five years. And those are jobs that you don't necessarily need a college education for, but they're good-paying jobs. And we need them in our community.
Commissioner... or Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee. I'm just a real fan of this program. I just, out of the blue today, I was at a meeting all afternoon that the Governor's Chief Education Officer held an advisory committee on STEM and CTE education. We talked about this program a bit. And there were a number of statistics that I'd just share with you and with the council I thought were really telling. By 2020, we're going to have an economy with almost 40,000 new job openings. 94% of them are going to require the kind of certification that's going to be offered by this technical education center. This really is the future right now of a big chunk of public education. I'm really excited that we're, as you pointed out, at the forefront, really nationally in this with the public-private partnership that went on here. And the list of statistics just goes on and on, playing off, really, off your Oregonian article. The kinds of jobs we're talking about are family wage jobs. They do require certification. They're in areas that this community has some real opportunity in, in healthcare is one of the biggest. We have been able to preserve, I think, through a lot of hard work, a really outstanding medical center in this community that is going to be a great employer in the future for these kids. This really becomes to me an intergenerational responsibility to guarantee that these kids have opportunity ahead of them. I know when our daughter was growing up, we were up in Mill City, and most of her peers were able to go to work with acquired knowledge. Anymore, you have got to go through these kinds of educational experiences to find comparable jobs where they used to be in the mills. The mills aren't there. This is where you have to go now to find these jobs. I think it's just tremendous what's happened here. We are so lucky. It'll make a difference in the economic development of this community for years to come that this center is here. We'll be training a workforce that people will come here, they'll come for shovel-ready land, and they'll come for a trained workforce. And it's going to be the work that you and your group have put together, Salem-Kaiser School District have done putting this together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said, but I know that, and we're going to be talking about the North Gate Urban Renewal Plan here in a few minutes. You know, for years, we've been talking about what are we going to do to improve that Portland Road corridor? What are we going to do to stimulate economic development? And I think, you know, we couldn't have envisioned something like this coming in to bring economic development and revitalization to the area. And I just, I drive by it every day on my way to work, so it's just been, in addition to all of the academic benefits, in addition to all of the skills that the kids are learning, because they come from all over the city. They're not just coming from, you know, that neighborhood. They come from schools from all over the city. But in addition to that, what it has brought to the neighborhood, I mean, it's just made a huge difference in the short time that it's been there. So I really appreciate the investment there, and I think it's going to stimulate the kind of economic development and revitalization that we would like to see in that area. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for your leadership. I know that that area is in your ward, and I've seen you at many, many of the meetings I've been going to, and appreciate your leadership in that part of our city.
Well, I'll add in here a little bit and not try to address what's gone on here, but one of the things, and I've been involved in these school and career programs for years, and one of the things I think is really great about these programs is students that are lost in the college curriculum kind of programs. They're not interested, don't want it, don't want to get it. Will find their passion in some of these different programs. It fires them up. They get better grades, go up, their attendance goes up. They've got something that they're really interested in, and they know to stay there they've got to, you know, do the work in all their classes. And so I've seen this turn, and I've had parents come up and say, "Thank you. I didn't know what I was going to do if that son or daughter was lost. I couldn't get them interested. They found this, and now they're a great student. They're happy, they're motivated, they've got a goal in life." And so that, too, is part of this process. And I think it's a great thing you're doing, and Mr. Takarsky's doing. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Counselor. And I, you know, for us, this is a public-private partnership, and our concern and our mission is to make sure that industry's at the table. So this just doesn't become another high school program. But the equipment, the curriculum, the instructors are all from industry so that what the kids are getting is relevant to the workforce that we've got in our community. And Counselor McCoy, I want to thank you because of your experience in the culinary industry. He was part of, we have industry advisory committees for each one of these programs. And I know that Counselor's being very modest, but he spent several hours with us already talking to us about what's necessary for these kids to have in their background to be successful in the culinary industry. So thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Chuck. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have a consent calendar. Okay, Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would move the consent calendar.
Second. Moved by...
For the consent calendar, yeah. And there's only one item on that, which is a de jure loan from the city to the urban renewal agencies. And I know people get confused about it at times. Basically, we're lending money, it'll be paid back typically in very short order. I think deadline is April 22nd.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
To keep the urban renewal agencies legal as far as having debt.
Been moved by Councilor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Benard to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? None opposed? Motion passes. We are now on two. No information reports. We're onto special orders of business. This is item 6A, approval of the Portland Road Corridor Action Plan Recommendations and Report. It's a presentation. Kristen Rutherford is going to take care of this for us.
Good evening.
She's going to inform us.
Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. This evening, I have two staff members here, Mark Medsger and Annie Gorski, who will provide a presentation and answer any questions you may have about the work that has been going on for the last year, year and a half, to develop the Portland Road Corridor Action Plan. Mark?
Good evening. My name is Annie Gorski. I'm a project manager in the city's Urban Development Department. If you recall, over a year ago, when we started this process, the Portland Road, second phase of Portland Road improvements from Pine Street all the way up to Hyacinth Street, we knew at the time that that was going to cost much more than the resources available in the urban renewal area. We also believed that that project alone wasn't going to spur the type of economic activity that we wanted to see in the area. Through this action plan process, we've heard from the real estate community, we've heard from the developers, we've heard from a number of folks that have confirmed that that work alone, or rather, that road improvement alone, isn't going to spur economic activity in the area. Tonight, you'll see some other recommendations that we'll be bringing forward to you that we think will be more effective in achieving economic activity. So with that, I would turn it over to Mark to walk through the recommendations.
I'm Mark Medsger. I'm the new old guy with urban development. I'm going to be presenting an overview of the action plan, just some highlights. Because we want to stay on track and keep things brief, I'm going to read from a script. I don't generally like to do this. I'd rather talk to you and not at you. But I'm a former planner at the City of Springfield, and believe me, I can go on and on and on. So we're going to keep it brief. But if my head's down and I'm not looking at you, it's not out of disrespect. We're just trying to get through this quickly. Madam Chair and Board Members, before you this evening is the Portland Road Corridor Action Plan. This is an action item requiring your consideration approval. If the board approves the plan, staff will return later this spring or summer with a package of implementations measures for your approval. The board initiated this plan over a year ago. Staff presented periodic updates to the board as the project progressed. And the action plan that you'll see tonight contains many of the elements that you've already reviewed through these updates. Most recently, in November, the board reviewed a series of project concepts in a work session. Those concepts were refined and are contained in the plan as recommended projects and actions. The action plan is based on broad public outreach, consultant analysis, and on feedback from the board in the North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board, or ENGRAB, as updates were presented over the course of the project. Public outreach included numerous public forums, meetings, and direct mailings, and three online public surveys. There were also targeted interviews with various businesses and stakeholders. Echo Northwest provided economic analysis for the project. DKS Associates provided transportation analysis. Their work provided an objective underpinning for the findings and recommendations in this plan. Among the handouts at your seat is a copy of the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area map. This particular map's an excerpt from that urban renewal plan map. The Portland Road Corridor is outlined in black. And in deference to Mr. Lee, I wanted to show you where Sea Tech was. So you'll find that on the map. The corridor is bounded by Hyacinth Street on the north, by Silverton Road on the south, and by a residential neighborhood on the east, and by the railroad on the west. Most of the projects... We're having a technical problem moving to the next slide. There we go. Most of the projects recommended in the action plan are intended for short-term implementation, meaning the next one to five years. One project is recommended for midterm implementation or between five and 10 years out. The following slides highlight the short-term and midterm projects. This recommendation is to support a public market, food incubator, or food hub. These are food-related developments that can both serve a community need and generate economic activity in the corridor. This is the Portland Mercado, a public market that opened about a year ago in East Portland. Inside the market is a mix of specialty shops, a meat market, and a café. There is also a commercial kitchen in back that is rented to caterers and food vendors. Outside is a small public plaza with food carts and an eating area. This development serves the neighborhood, but also attracts customers from outside the area. This is a wholesale food hub operation. A food hub is a central collection point for locally grown products, mostly from small farms for distribution to grocery stores, restaurants, schools, and hospitals. Some food hubs also include a retail farmer's market as part of their business model. Well, Emmett University is already working with local farmers to supply their campus kitchen. If you shop Roth's or Safeway, you may notice promotions advertising the fact that they source locally grown products. A local food hub would help connect Salem businesses and institutions with locally grown food. A successful marketer food hub could serve local residents and employees in the Portland Road corridor. A feasibility study, though, is needed to determine what kind of food-related business would meet community needs and be a catalyst for additional development. Vega Braun Brewing on Hyacinth Street is a successful industrial flex space redevelopment that has received URA support. In Salem, the vacancy rate for similar industrial flex space is about 2%. A 10% vacancy rate is considered a seller's market. Stakeholder feedback confirms the idea that there's a significant need for more commercial industrial flex space in the corridor. This map highlights various opportunity sites that are in the corridor. You should have a copy of this map at your seat as well. There are two sites of a particular interest in the corridor. One is the Oregon State Police Headquarters site at Bill Fry and Portland Road. And the second is a 13-acre Epping property. Both are being actively marketed. There are also greenfield sites along Claggett Creek on both sides of Portland Road that have promise. There are inventoryed brownfield sites that have not shown on this map, but they also may be eligible for funding assistance. URA funds could be used to support new development or redevelopment through land acquisition, modified grants and loans, or perhaps through requests for proposals for development concepts. In addition to flex space... In addition to flex space, the project recommends mixed-use projects for the corridor. These are examples of mixed-use projects in North Salem. The Hollywood Station development at the bottom is one example that's already been constructed on Portland Road. The two pictures at the top are mixed-use buildings on Broadway, not far from the corridor. The action plan recommends support for workforce and affordable housing. Residential vacancy rates in the corridor are very low, about 3%. A 5% vacancy rate is considered a tight market. This is a midterm project recommended for implementation in the next five to 10 years. Housing projects of this type can be complex and are generally require partnerships for development, hence the longer term for implementation. While the North Gateway Urban Renewal Plan recognizes the need for housing, current grant and loan toolbox policies do not allow URA funds to be used to support housing projects. If the action plan is approved, staff would prepare amended grant and loan policies for board approval to change this. These policy amendments can be completed in the short term. The North Gateway Toolbox Program allows up to $50,000 in grants and $100,000 in loans. These grants require between a 20% and 50% match from the applicant. Feedback from businesses indicate that the grant and loan limits need to be increased. Increasing grant and loan limits to $300,000 in the West Salem and Riverfront Downtown URAs helps spur new development in those areas. We need to strengthen and expand the city's business retention and expansion program. Staff will continue to focus on small businesses. SED Core is our partner in serving the needs of larger traded sector employers. The goal is to build relationships that will help us better support small businesses by linking them with city resources or with resources and services provided by our partner agencies. Business retention and expansion activities are funded through existing staff resources and will not use URA funding. DKS Associates has indicated that Portland Road has the capacity to meet vehicle needs into the future. That said, portions of Portland Road are missing sidewalks and do not adequately meet the needs of pedestrians and cyclists, particularly in the north end of the corridor between Bill Fry and Hyacinth Street. This action recommends constructing sidewalk segments where they're missing and adding mid-block crossing signals. These are safety-focused projects. The mid-block crossings would be installed as recommended by the city traffic engineer and may include sites south of Bill Fry Drive. Other street-stake improvements could be included in conjunction with new development or redevelopment as it occurs. One recommendation we didn't talk about tonight is the need to strengthen the corridor identity. We need to work with partners in the corridor to market the unique and positive characteristics of the area. This activity doesn't have a specific timeline, but will be pursued as opportunities allow. Past URA investments in the corridor are making a positive change. The actions and projects recommended in the action plan will continue that progress. If the plan is approved, staff will return with a package of implementing actions, including amendments to the North Gateway Urban Renewal Plan, amendments to the grant and loan toolbox and policies, and a request for approval of the fiscal year 2016-17 budget, providing budgetary authority to begin implementation of the plan. With that... With that, Annie and I are prepared to answer questions, but I suggest you direct them to her since I'm the new guy.
Counselor Bednarz.
One little comment that I had, and this is germane to a meeting two weeks ago when this council chamber's on the 14th, and that had to do with those little islands that are out in the middle of the road and the desire to perhaps upgrade the engineering of those locations. Portland Road, it may be a 35 or 45 mile-an-hour traffic lane, but it is used considerably faster than that. And whatever we do for those islands for pedestrians that are trying to cross Portland Road, we're going to have to take a dramatic step up in protecting those people as they use those crossing points. And that may mean additional lighting, additional marking, or whatever. But it's just, I've dealt with Portland Road for a long time, and I just hate to see the speeds the cars that are going through there and people mixing in with that.
And are you, just to clarify, are you referring to the flashing beacons, the rapid flashing beacons, if we were to install those?
Well, I'm actually referring...
Or improvements to existing medians, possibly?
Referring to islands that may have vegetation within the island that obscure the individual who's on the island, I may be referring to that the lights, the flashing lights may not be enough, that reflectors on the curb line, the curbs may be higher, such as we have over on Hood and, I don't know if it's Fairgrounds, Road, and Hood, but was next to the Salem Alliance Church where they raised this height of the curb because we had so many cars that were coming into the buildings to protect the individuals in this case or in that case, the building, but it protected the individuals from fast-moving vehicles. So it's more than just lights. It's a, I think we have to kick it up, certainly with the number of deaths we've had in our community. This is screaming right now to say we need to kick it up a notch on those islands, which we're saying is a vestige for pedestrians, but really isn't working that well.
Yeah.
No, and I don't know that the islands were intended to be pedestrian refuge. Often, those islands are a matter of access management, you know, on the road. But these crossings, signalized crossings, are relatively inexpensive as road projects go. And certainly, there are other kinds of strategies that might be used to help with that crossing issue. But it's something that we need to work with our city traffic engineer on. This planner is not authoritative in making recommendations of that type. But we do know that this type of signal is effective. And with that, there are small islands that are created that do allow some refuge at these crossing points.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I guess I first have a point-of-order question for the city attorney. I really have comments on this as opposed to questions of staff, and so should I wait on my comments till we have a motion to adopt, or can I discuss those now?
They'd be more proper during deliberations.
I'll wait then.
Counselor Dickey.
All right. So I move that the agency board approve the Portland Road Corridor Action Plan with recommendations designed to improve the economic conditions and livability within the corridor and direct staff to identify and prepare those measures needed to implement the action plan for agency board review.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey, he seconded by Counselor Bennett, to approve the Portland Road Corridor Action Plan recommendations and report. Is there a discussion? Counselor Anderson.
Yes, surprisingly, I do have some discussion. And I was glad Mr. Lee was here because in looking through this, I look at page two of the staff recommendation. It talks about public market and support development of flex space, et cetera. All that seems to tie in right exactly with the schooling we have out there on that road. So I think that's a terrific public-private, public-agency-public-agency tie-in. So I think that's great. The other thing I want to talk about is the affordable housing. I always talk about that in almost any context, and I think that's terrific. And I look forward to seeing amendments to the toolbox policies so that can be used to support public housing. And that mayor may not have a little connection to the school and also to the industrial areas that are going to be built up there. Finally, I have to say that I ride my bike, I go swimming at the CROC Center, so I often ride my bike down Portland Road. And I agree wholeheartedly, it needs pedestrian improvements and bicycle improvements. I know this is not part of the plans you talked about, but the underpass, the railroad underpass on Portland Road, which is in the study area, is abysmal. One out of 10 times, I have a flat tire. And I know that the Public Works Department has done some cleanup on that because I've seen things from Director Fernandez, so that's terrific. But if we want to make this friendly for pedestrians and bicycles, that's an area that really needs to be looked at, too. So thank you very much for the work you've done, and I'm in support of this plan.
Counselor Dickey, and I apologize for not having you speak to your motion first.
Oh, that's okay. I knew Counselor Anderson was just chomping at the bit to make his comment, so it's fine. First, I do want to thank staff for all of their hard work on this. I know this has been something we've been working on two or three years, I've lost track of the time. But I know you've been to us a couple times, we've sent it back to you, you've gone out and you've done more research, talked to more stakeholders. And I am really happy with the product that we have. This is a, for anybody watching this, this is a 105-page staff report. So it's one of our more lengthy reports that we get, but it's actually very interesting, 105 pages of fairly interesting reading. And the suggestions, you know, there's so, there's some new and innovative things that we can do in this area, some opportunities here. As I know, I've mentioned many times, the challenge of having residential and commercial and industrial all in that same area. You know, I feel like some of the suggestions will really help address all of those things and we'll be able to kind of get at both sides of the street, so to speak, with this. So I'm really excited for the opportunities that we might have. I also would echo that, you know, that railroad bridge, pedestrian bridge, is really a problem. And it's been something that has been a long, ongoing discussion. If we can't find a way to deal with that structure itself due to, you know, working with the railroad or whatever, what can we do to get people around it or something? So I think that would be, you know, definitely a next step in this. But again, thank you so much. I've just, I've heard good things from people in the neighborhood, people on the advisory board about this, and I just really appreciate everybody's hard work and look forward to what we'll be able to do in the future.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. I want to join Counselor Dickey. I've had a chance to sit in on a number of the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee meetings involving this, and it has been really an interesting process. And I think the staff, along with everything else that you have been applauded for, is the level of public involvement that went into this. This is a real model, I think, of how a project like this, as big as it is and as complicated as it was, can be done. So Annie, I know how much work you've done on this. I just thought it was really a tremendous piece of work. And I think I'll just join everyone else saying, boy, someday it'd be really nice to get the railroad to just fix their bridge. But, because if the cost of that process alone could wipe out every other idea we have, we could spend it all on that, not have it done, and have nothing left for anything else. So it's going to be a, I hope it'll be a process that you and Public Works and others can kind of launch into just to really work with them on what can be done with the railroad, meeting their responsibility to the community as well.
Counselor Anderson.
First of all, I want to apologize to Counselor Dickey for jumping in on her, and thank you for letting me to do that. Secondly, this is just a historical aside. That railroad bridge is a Condi McCullough Bridge, if anybody knows about McCullough Bridges. He did all the bridges on the Oregon coast. He did the bridge in Oregon City. He was the state highway engineer for a long time, and he used to live up on Lefell Street, Upper Lefell Street, in what is now known as the McCullough Upjohn House. But I have to say, that is about his worst design I've ever seen.
There's good news and bad news there. Any other discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to say something.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes, hello, thank you. I would really like to give credit wholeheartedly to the North Gateway Urban Renewal Advisory Board. They have worked long and hard on this plan, and I must say that they have been more than patient in listening to new ideas and incorporating new ideas into what were former plans and ideas. And I just want to say how much I know, we all appreciate when citizens are willing to serve on those boards. Sometimes they don't know how laborious the work is going to be, and they've done heavy, heavy lifting. And I just want to make a real public thank you to that board. Jason Cox is the chair, and I think he's done a very good job the last couple of years guiding things along to reach this plan.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, no more discussion? Call for the vote here. All those in favor of the motion, which has been moved by Counselor Dickey and approved by Counselor Bennett, to approve the Portland Road Corridor Action Plan recommendations and report, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And that, there's no public hearings or new business, so this special meeting in the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem is adjourned. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
I am, too.
Counselor Nanki?
I'm three.
Counselor McCoys?
Present.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Benards?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Peterson is present by phone.
Counselor Nanki, motion for approval additions and, of the additions and deletions to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would move additions, deletions, and revisions to the agenda as contained in the sheet with the yellow cover on it.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Bednarz to approve the additions, deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, and that addition consists of supplemental staff report regarding recreational marijuana regulation and identifies the facilities that actually had requested land-use compatibility statements, their status, and a map containing their locations as well.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? It's been moved by Counselor Nanki to approve the additions and deletions, seconded by Counselor Bednarz. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. It's now time for counsel and city manager comment. Counselors... Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much. I have three comments. And the first one is that until, I've been out of town, and until this weekend, I was under the impression that April 4th, we were going to have a work session and a public hearing on the police station. And now I understand it's just a workstation. And I, in speaking with the city manager about this earlier, I understand that other counselors have been concerned about this. And I think at some point, we will need a second public hearing because the first one was pretty much centered on sighting as opposed to cost and size. And everything kind of got sidetracked into that. So I think that we will need another public hearing to talk about size and cost at some point. So I would ask that the city manager consider that and schedule one at the earliest possible time. Second comment is that part of the time I was gone, I was at the National League of Oregon Cities Convention in Washington, DC. I went with Counselor Nanki, who was actually there in his august position as the president of the Oregon League of Citizens and Cities, excuse me. And I also went with the mayor, and I found it was very, very interesting, three ways. One is making contacts and networking and discussing items of interest with other city counselors from all over the country. The second was the breakout sessions that I attended, and the ones that I went to were mostly concerned with transportation, alternative transportation, public transportation, as well as affordable housing issues and homeless issues. So those were very helpful to me. Thirdly was our opportunity to speak with our legislative delegation, and we had one big meeting with the senators, and then we had individual meetings. So one was Senator Wyden in person, and the other was Senator Merkley's staff. We also met with the Congressman Trader's staff, and the delegation as a whole met with all of the other representatives. And the mayor and I also had a meeting with HUD to discuss affordable housing and other issues that HUD, excuse me, other issues that our housing authority, including the problem with the HUD vouchers never being up with the market. And so I'm sure what we expressed will make the federal government do something, but it was at least nice to have those issues. So thank you for, the city council for allowing, affording the money to send me to it. I think it was very interesting and worthwhile. The third thing is on a more sober note, and that is we've had another pedestrian death. And this was not in Salem, it was in Kaiser on River Road, but it's even doubly tragic. It was a Salem young boy, eight-year-old child named Jaren Nash, and he was killed crossing River Road. And the main, you know, he wasn't in a place where, with his mom, and he wasn't in a place where there's a crosswalk. But I understand that there has been some input on there needing to be a crosswalk or some sort of thing at the spot where he was, which to me indicates that there's, you know, too far of a distance between crosswalks, which applies to Salem area as well as the Kaiser area. So it also indicates to me that, once again, speed is the major issue that we're looking at here. And we need to do something about this. And my condolences to the young boy's family, and I hope we can do everything we can in the future to avoid more incidents of this type.
Counselor Dickey and Counselor Bednarz.
Thanks. I just want to underscore the pedestrian issue. I know this has been a frequent topic of conversation. There was a nice article that went out in the Statesman Journal last week, I think, that talked about our efforts and our potential efforts to address this issue. I just, this is really fresh in my mind because even tonight, just before I came here, I went down to the Starbucks at Liberty and Court. I was crossing Court Street. A car, you know, I had the walk signal, car had a green light. They just went right in front of me as I was in the middle of the crosswalk. On my way back, crossing back the other way, a few minutes later, I had two cars, not one, but two cars, when I had the walk signal, come right across Liberty Street in the, with the red light, right in front of me as I was in the middle of the crosswalk. This is a problem. We really need to get a handle on this. This is broad daylight, I had a walk signal, you know, and then we have all of the challenging areas that should have crosswalks, don't have light, don't have, I mean, all the things that we've talked about. So this is fresh in my mind, and I, you know, I appreciate the Statesman's attention to it, and hopefully, we'll be able to put something together soon.
Thank you. Counselor Bednarz.
I, too, missed the March 14th meeting. However, I wanted to say a couple things. First off, I feel like this is my second city council meeting for the day because last night, I started on watching through CCTV and YouTube, the council meeting from March 14th. And I just wanted to comment several things on what, one was the professional quality of what's there, the ability to follow on the discussion. You could hear clearly, you could see pictures clearly, you could see all the additions that were, that were being shown on the screen as well. I wanted to give a shout-out for two CCTV people who constantly have put these on, these, put the programs together and put them on to CCTV, one being Lee Bush and the other one being Soha, and I'm going to butcher her last name, but it's Barrie. And I hope that I got that right. Anyway, the other thing that I wanted to mention was, going through the agenda, at least it's new to me, but oftentimes, we see, we have the additions and deletions, and years gone by, I don't remember seeing, well, where is the public going to be able to reach in and pick up the additions and deletions of the staff reports, or heaven pray tell, some of the PowerPoint presentations? And at least now, I'm noticing on the agenda page, when you go into the city council agenda page or the agendas, on the right-hand side, you're going to see links to all of the staff reports, all of the PowerPoint, and the additions and deletions for the day. In this case today, we only had one addition, but I'm hoping to see right up to the minute information, which is what people have been asking of us, clearly, where do I get this information? When you guys are talking about it, we don't see the same thing. Well, here it is. It's right on this page, and it's easy to get to. So kudos for... So kudos for, for the staff for doing the website, kudos for CCTV.
Council Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to drop back onto the pedestrian issues as well, there's a couple, and the commercial street or commercial corridor plan was moving forward rapidly. I guess Public Works had a change in some headcount or basically staff, and so it's been reassigned, and it's moving forward again, because there's a couple of spots in there that are just accidents waiting to happen. Actually, I already have a friend of mine who was co-leaders on the Community Emergency Response Team. His wife actually got hit at the intersection right there in front of Roth's. And then we have a big problem at Fred Meyer, where people shoot across five lanes on commercial. And, and so we need to deal with that one as well, because it's only a matter of time. And it, the one accident was similar. It's like, I have the walk, and the car has a green. It's like, who takes priority on that? The pedestrian, of course, but pull out the dice, and yeah, so I was glad to hear that that's moving forward again, and the neighborhood will be discussing that here as well.
Any other comments? City manager?
Thank you. As you know, the city organization exists to provide services, and those core services are provided by employees. And this week, the city is recognizing someone who has served and those who will be serving. First is Harold Crook. Harold is not here this evening, but if he were, I think we would be thanking him for his 43 years of service to the city. Harold kept the parks maintained and irrigated. His knowledge and abilities will be missed. Forty-three years of service. This morning, the Salem Police Department had a swearing-in ceremony for 10 newly hired officers. I don't think all 10, the experience of those 10 combined would equal Harold's experience, but we're, we're still very, very happy to have them join the city and join the police department. The ceremony was broadcast live over Periscope and is available on our YouTube channel. So if you'd like to watch the ceremony, it is on YouTube at Salem PD TV. Again, that's 10, 10 newly hired officers, and over time, we'll try to have them come in and introduce, introduce them to you. We're, we're just thrilled to have them be joining the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for comments. So I've got the privilege of reading a proclamation on behalf of the mayor, which I'll do right now. Whereas every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment, and whereas in 2014, there were 10,010 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, of which 13 resulted in death. Of those reported cases, 813 were victims in Marion County. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by joining together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to provide opportunities to educate, train, and support caregivers by raising awareness of child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for parents. And whereas by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, in standing in for Anna M. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, I do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and invite the entire community to join me in preventing child abuse in Salem, and encourage all citizens to protect our children. Dated this 28th day of March 2016, Anna M. Peterson, Mayor. We're now here for public comment, and we have some folks for public comment. First is Mike Flynn, followed by Ellen Miller. I want to remind you that you've got three minutes, and please state your name and either your address or ward number. Speak directly into the microphone. After two minutes, the yellow light comes on. After three, the red light will come on, and that will be your three minutes. Welcome, Mr. Flynn. Thanks for coming down.
Hi, thank you. Again, my name is Mike Flynn, and I'm here representing, again, the Portland Corridor. I'm, we're at 3625 Northeast Portland Road. One of the things that transpired, we've been in this operation as a marijuana grow facility now for an excess of two years, and when the change was made in December, converting the grow location from IG to IC, I don't think anybody realized the impact of what that meant to our facility. What that has changed is we can only grow for medical marijuana, they're not recreational. We've got a 35,000 square foot grow facility that we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in prepping to be a recreational facility. That in this change will mean that we're going to have to not execute our first option to purchase this building and walk away from a couple million dollar purchase. We're also going to have to close down and gut all of the resources we've put into this building and be able to take back out of this area, just because it's not available to grow economically in the medical marijuana operations. So the whole port is, I wanted to appear to the mayor and the councilors and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you and speak to you, hoping that we can come to some compromise where either that can be modified or amended in that IC to be able to allow us to grow a recreational facility in that location. I think we've been pretty good stewards in that community in terms of cleaning up the area, the vagrants that were in the facilities when we removed, have migrated and moved somewhere else, the prostitutes have been moved on, the other activities that were going on there will help clean up the area, and I think we've done a reasonable job of that. And we're close and we're adjacent to the school that is there, and we appreciate the ability to be there, but I don't think we've, that we operated for two years, and I don't think that anybody even recognized that we were there and that we existed, that we've been very quiet and, and just trying to conduct a business in the neighborhood.
Okay. Is that it? Questions? Council Anderson?
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Flynn. Is the zoning where you are currently, is that IC zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Council Dickey?
Just a reminder, how long have you been operating the medical?
Been in there two years right now.
Two years? Okay, thanks.
And, and Mr. Flynn, again, so I understand you were, you developed this to grow recreational marijuana or supply recreational marijuana?
We started there as recreational marijuana, given the limits. I mean, the facility is much greater than what you could grow to match the numbers. So we've been limited to the, to the, the numbers that we had for patients that were there. And again, the whole program was to be for O M M P was not a profit, that wasn't the intent. But we were developing the infrastructure for the day that the recreational came, so that we would be ready for being able to operate as a recreational environment and become a profitable entity.
So I'm curious, in the, in the immediate area, it's zoned IC, but what's it look like, you know, in, in that area? It's, this sounds like it's a warehouse of some 35,000 square feet.
Are you ever been around here, first of all, and remember what the Kelly Appliance Store was?
Oh, yeah.
That, that is our facility, is the Kelly Appliance Warehouse, or the old Kelly Appliance Warehouse.
Okay. It's right on Portland Road.
Yes, I mean, we're 500 feet from the State Police Department, and we're, you know, there's a number of restaurants. We've got a taqueria that sits in the front parking lot. It's, you know.
That's probably a good spot, right?
Except for everybody getting a power pole in the middle of the night on a Friday night. Yeah, that's Salem. But we've had to upgrade. We've, we've supported and have had a lot of the electrical requirements in that area have been upgraded by PG&E. In fact, we've got a power upgrade that's scheduled coming in the next couple of weeks that we will now have to cancel if we can't do, do something with, with the rezoning.
Okay. Council Bednarz?
So when we started off with medical marijuana, one of the conversations that we had was to quickly instill some rules so that people weren't developing businesses in zoning areas. We hadn't decided as a council as to where the production of, or the sale of medical marijuana was to occur, and so we wanted to prevent people from building a business in an area that wasn't zoned appropriately when the time came, so that basically, if we did make a decision, they would have to take the business down. This is exactly, sounds exactly like the same thing, except it's dealing with recreational marijuana, not, not, not medical marijuana, as we had talked about previously. It was to prevent, basically, making the decisions first before companies came in and invested a ton of money into their facility, just in, in the case that they may have to tear it all out, because it isn't allowed in that zone. I look forward to the discussion the council will have later tonight in reference to this issue.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time.
Any other questions? Now, I, I'm with Council Bednarz. It's one thing to make the decisions, but when facts come in here and you have to start looking at a different, a different light, it goes from theoretical to practical, so I'm too looking forward to that discussion. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Ellen Miller?
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Mayor Protem McCoy, and members of council for record. My name is Ellen Miller. I reside at 466 Rural Avenue South, Ward 7. I am here tonight on behalf of my firm, CFM Strategic Communications. We are your lobby team down at the state legislature, and we are responsible for the 2016 legislative report you'll see in your packet. I believe it's Item 6J. I just wanted to say briefly that it was a short but very busy session down at the Capitol. The issues that were most important to the city were the housing package that was passed that includes some initiatives to increase affordable housing in the state, also an increase to the state transient lodging tax was important to the city. You'll find details on that legislation and many more other bills that the legislature considered in your report. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to represent you down at the Capitol, and thank your staff, and those of you that serve on the legislative committee. We really appreciate the time that you put into responding to the legislative concepts and bills that the legislature is considering. I wanted to make myself available for any questions in case you had any.
Any questions for Ms. Miller? I'm, I serve on the committee. I would say, Ellen, you do a great job for us.
Thank you.
You know, it's, I knew you weren't already down there, but when I was walking the halls with you, but I'm really impressed. You're thorough, you're on, you've got the answers for us when we asked for them. That report is, is excellent. It's clear as anybody wants to read it. Plus, through all the bills that she dealt with, you'll be impressed with the, not only the volume, but the quality of the bills and the report you're going to receive. So thank you very much for your work. Council Anderson?
Thank you also, Ellen. I serve as an alternate on that committee, so I'm there at many meetings. But I, I had, I'm doing this again, I'm going to raise another point of order, because it's, this is an informational item, and I had some discussion at that time, so would it be appropriate for me again to save that until we come to that part of the agenda and the informational items?
Yes.
I will then. No question of Ms. Miller. It's a, it's something directed to the staff on one of the reports.
There you go. Any other questions? Thank you, Ellen. Thanks for being here. Okay, that's the end of the public comment. So we're moving on to the consent calendar. Council Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar as provided.
Second. Do you want to speak to what's on, what's included in the consent calendar?
Yes, and there's three items on the consent calendar. Two of those we've already discussed. One is the intergovernmental agreement for the short-term loan from the city to the Urban Renewal Agency. The second is the, the item that was on the Housing Authority meeting in regard to the property adjacent to Battle Creek, the old golf course, will be an accessway to the park, and so it's extending property management services term to that. And then the third item, excuse me, is the recreational marijuana regulation, which is dealing with putting regulations in place that mirror the medical marijuana regulation, since we have nothing in place now to keep people from putting things where it might not be appropriate.
There you go. So it's been moved by Council Nanki, seconded by Council Bednarz? I figured that. It was a guess.
I just have a comment.
Discussion. Council Anderson?
On the Item C 3C, 3.3C, the recreational marijuana, and I, I'm just looking specifically at the discussion of fees, that at some point, the staff will be coming back to us with a fee schedule. Yeah, for new and renewed licenses for employee and volunteer background checks as part of the marijuana handler license. I would just hope that we had this discussion in medical marijuana, that sometimes the state regulations might be duplicated by the city regulations, so I'm, I'm sure the staff will be looking at that and make sure we're not duplicating work done by the state and how they already approved the people who work there, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Council Nanki, seconded by Council Bednarz to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? No? Motion passes. So we're now to public hearing. We're going to have a report from city attorney.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding ordinance bill number 516 referring a tax on the sale of marijuana items to the Salem voters for the November 2016 election. The hearing will be conducted with a staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons.
Thank you.
Bear with me when we get the right presentation up here. So I apologize, it looks like my presentation's been deleted from the laptop, so I'm going to wing it here. But basically, what we have is, is the ordinance is going to enact a 3% tax on the sale of recreational marijuana. It's, follows the state law. You currently have SRC Chapter on the books that provides up to a 10% tax. That tax was adopted last year prior to the, the state legislation that would have allowed, that allows the 3% tax. A few months back, council gave direction to go forward and comply with the state law provisions, which allow the city to adopt a 3% tax on, on the sale of marijuana items. And the, the tax will need to be referred to the voters for approval. If it were to be approved by the voters, it would take effect in January of 2017. As far as revenue goes, the finance, the Budget Office has roughly estimated revenues to be $100,000. As you may note in the staff report, there is a recent report from the state of Oregon, where they have said that their revenues from early sales, which is just recreational sales from medical dispensaries, their early sales for the month of January are 3.48 million. That's the tax revenue that the state has received from those early sales. The state had earlier estimated their revenue for the entire year to be between 2 and 3 million. So our estimate on revenue from the Budget Office was a rough estimate based off what the state had roughly estimated, so I'm not going to say it's going to exceed $100,000, but there's always that possibility. As far as next steps go, there was, you also received some comment earlier from a citizen regarding whether or not the state would collect the tax on our behalf. There was 2016 legislation that meant state law to allow us to do that. The Finance Services Manager has indicated she would like to pursue that. If, again, if the tax is approved, we would enter into an IGA with the State Department of Revenue to have them collected on our behalf. I'm sure the, the state will add a processing fee onto that, but it'd probably be less than what we would, would cost us to do that same function. We would still reserve the authority to collect from folks who are delinquent and whatnot. As far as next steps goes at this, if you approve this, we'll go through second reading at the next meeting. We'll also have a resolution for you to adopt the explanatory statement and the measure, and then authorize me to draft the ballot title. At that point, it'll go through the ballot title process. Once the ballot title is in final form, it would be sent off to the county elections officers. And I apologize for not having a PowerPoint, but that concludes my presentation.
Do we have any public comment? We have no public comment then?
Anybody back to another chair? Be Councilor Protem.
De-counselor Pro Tem.
Okay. That's some public comment here. Marvin Sadness. Hi, Marvin. Welcome. State your name, speak right in the microphone, get it right up there in front of you there. So.
I'm Marvin Sadness. I live at 640 15th Street Northeast. We're neighbors. I don't want to see my city go into this collecting. Substance use is part of our culture. Substance abuse is part of our economic. And I'll just give you one number. 50% of the alcohol produced is consumed by 8%. And for the, for my city to be in the business of collecting from the recreational use of marijuana. Oregon made a huge stride. When we legalized marijuana, we made a huge stride in addressing the addiction problem we have in our culture. Portugal legalized everything in 2001, and their police departments, their medical people said it was the smartest thing we ever could have done. The police departments were against it, but after it passed, a year after it passed, they said this is the best thing that could have happened to us. We now deal with crime. So anyway, this, we all have anecdotes about the, Oregon's economy now is addicted to this lottery. And we know who's pouring the money into those damn machines. Let these, these kids decide for themselves whether they're going to use a substance or go into the abuse of a substance. I don't know whether marijuana is addictive or not. I guess the jury is still out on that, but letting, and for the city, for you guys as leaders, you have to, you have to step, step out and use moral leadership here for the, for our government, and it's not that much money. Leave it alone. Leave it with the kids, leave it with the families, leave it with the community, leave it with the medical people. I just don't think it's, I just think it's a, it's a very dumb thing for us to do. So please don't get on that train. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. And my, I'm sorry you're neighbors with Counselor Bennett. That's probably a tough deal there.
See what happens.
Okay. Now, so we have count questions of you, right? Questions of staff? Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I have just one really, and I, I know it's in the Oregon laws, but I don't seem to have, haven't found it. And that is the tax on sale of marijuana items. What exactly are the items that are talked about?
Dan Atchison, city attorney. Essentially marijuana items is defined in state law to mean the, the metables or the edible marijuana products, as well as marijuana itself.
Okay, so we're talking about the buds, the cookies, those type of things? We're not talking about?
Bogs.
Tax on pipes or cigarette papers or?
No, it's products containing marijuana. I think it also would include the butane derivatives and whatnot, too, the oils. You know more about it than I do.
Hey. I read a lot. I read a lot. Counselor Henderson.
I have another question for the city attorney. I'm looking at the ballot measures. So hypothetically, what happens if the citizens of Salem vote down the 3% tax? Does that mean that the tax becomes a 22% tax in Salem, or it means it's still 25%? It's just the state gets that extra 3%?
Actually, it's a seven, it's, right now it's a 25% tax on the early sales.
Yeah, okay.
Going forward, it'll be a 17% tax.
Okay.
Once the recreational retailers are authorized. So if the citizens vote down the 3% tax, it will stay at 17% and?
And the state will get it.
Yeah, there's a provision in the law that we, that all cities get 10% of the revenue.
Right. Okay.
And we would get an application of that.
So that seems to me to be an education on, and we might want to discuss when it's time for the ballot measure, that even if they vote, if the citizens vote down the 3%, the tax will still be the same amount.
No.
It won't?
It'll be 17% if they voted down, or 20% if they voted out.
Okay. Okay.
Counselor Bednarz and Counselor Bennett.
So I had this comment the last time, actually. We were talking about, about the same issue, I believe, a year ago, and it had to do with, it's kind of a comment, kind of a question of our police chief, but it has to do with pricing marijuana out of the, out of the market. One of the only reasons that I supported getting the recreational or medical marijuana into licensed locations was that it was in the front door. We could see where it was, and it wasn't in the back alley. As it was said, if we increase the taxes on this product so much, it's going to drive it back into the alley. But I think, as it was said by our police chief, regardless, it's going to be in the back alley, even if you don't do anything else, it's going to be in the back alley, and it'll always be there, regardless of if we increase it 17% or 20% at this point. So my main thing about the 3% is, does it price the product out of the market where people start going back to the alleyway again?
If I can comment on that.
Kind of sounds like it would probably happen anyway.
Just, just to, I'm sure there's counter arguments as well, but the January sales that the state recorded with the 3.48 million in one month at a 25% tax level, I would think maybe means it's not priced out of the market.
I would add, look at Colorado's tax, I think is higher than, than that. And it's booming in Colorado, so I'm not sure. That's an issue that's going to tamp down the sales.
The other thing that leads me to believe, to think at this point, to wander about, and that has to do with, are we moving too quickly relative to the information that we have back from the sales? If we're just getting back January, here it is, end of March, we're just getting back January's information. Are we moving too quickly for the information that's coming to us to know the right answers? That may be more of a rhetoric question, but I think it's important.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. The, the state's 17%, is that also include a state revenue sharing with cities? I mean, is there a portion of that that's also coming to the cities?
So 10% of that 17% will go to cities. And that's, it's not a straight, every city in the state gets it. It's based on?
Sale.
Which cities haven't prohibited recreational sales? Number of dispensaries and whatnot.
Well, let me, let me understand it then. So we would be, we'll, we'll get 10%?
Of the 17%.
Of the 17?
No, that's distributed to all cities.
Among all cities.
10%. The state, or the state goes 90%.
So all cities will get 10%?
Ah, okay.
Of that 17%.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
But so, you know, we may get $100,000 from state revenue. We may get $10,000. It's really to be determined. The 3% is all ours.
Okay.
You know, this doesn't, I wish you had your presentation, because I'd love to have seen the numbers, actually, how much we're, you know, you're forecasting. I'm not sure I fully am tracking on what the numbers look like. This, adding this 3% increases the city's take on marijuana by how much? By what percentage then?
Well, so, so right now, if with no tax, with no city tax, there's a state tax of 17% on recreational marijuana items. So that's of that, whatever that number is, say it was $3 million in January, just use a rough figure, all cities will get 10% of whatever that, what did that net revenue was.
And the distribution is by sales, volume, per city?
They get 300, yeah, they divvy up to 300,000.
Right. Right. So they would, so cities that have banned, you know, recreational sales, they will not participate in the state's revenue sharing. It's also based on the number of retail outlets in a jurisdiction. So it's really difficult to say with any accuracy what portion the city would get of that. So if this, this, if you approve this ordinance and then the voters of the city of Salem approve the ordinance in November, the city will add 3% within the city of Salem onto that tax, and we'll get 100% of that 3% tax.
Okay. I, but I, what I'm trying to understand is of, of an, of, say, an ounce of marijuana, what is our aggregated take on it without the 3% and with the 3, you know? Do you see what I'm saying? I'm just not sure I'm understanding.
If an ounce of marijuana costs $100?
Okay.
There's, there would be a 20% tax on that. So $20. 17, 97% would go to the state, 3% would come to the city of Salem. Then out of that 97% that goes to the state, we would then get our 10% allocation.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, I had the, I had the numbers wrong.
I got you.
I don't, I feel like I don't know the numbers now. I'm getting pretty confused.
Well, if it was $100, Chuck, there'd be $3 coming to the city on our 3% tax.
I, I think until I see these numbers, I'm going to have real trouble with this one. I want to see these numbers.
Okay, we've got Counselor Dickey, then Nanki, Anderson, and Bednarz. Counselor Dickey.
So my question was actually a little bit along the lines of Counselor Bennett, so I think I got this. So on that $100, we would, if, if we had the 3%, we would get $3 no matter what, and then $1.70 would get divided up among those cities that would, based on whatever formula the state has.
$17.
Well, $17, but then 10% of that, so $1.70. So we get, we would get $3 and some unknown share of $1.70. But, so on $100, we would get $3. I don't, I mean, I guess I, I'm not thinking that's going to raise it too much to push it out of the market and that, but, but seeing then we actually get something substantial that, that $1.70 out of $100 could be, you know, it could be substantial or it could be nothing. So, okay, so I'm understanding it correctly? Is that?
Yes. And you explained it much better than I do.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I was just going to answer a couple of the other pieces in regards to, because I thought originally it was going to be based off population, and then once we had kind of a layout of what the state actually looked like, then they would break it out by number of participating facilities inside of your jurisdiction, and that the formula would change once they had a good handle on it. But I don't, that, that's the last I heard. I figured you would know more than I, but.
When we, when we get a check, I'll let you know.
Okay. And then just to comment on this, we are actually taxing. We are not approving federally illegal opportunity to occur, so I will be making the motion and supporting it here later.
Counselor Anderson.
I pretty much think we beat this horse. So, but let me take another run at it. Out of that 1.7%, we will be sharing that with Portland, we will be sharing that with Eugene, we will be sharing that with Ashland, and it will be on some formula. So when we're looking at that, you know, if there's, it's going to be de minimis out of that 1.7%. It might be 5 cents. I said that facetiously, but it might be in that, on that, on that area. Okay. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Bednarz.
And continuing to beat this darn horse. I just wanted, you were throwing around some numbers, 170, 1.7%, and it's, the issue that I think even I got confused on up to this point is, of the 17% tax that the state is collecting, we are not going to get 10%. 10% and then the state gets 7%. We get 10% of that 17. Ergo, it's 1.7% of whatever that amount is. And that, that's all I was trying to make clear, because it is confusing if you don't think of it. That's why the number was being tossed around, and that's why $1.70 was being tossed around based on the cost of $100 per unit. Okay.
Counselor Benjamin.
Before we went down this road of decriminalizing or legalizing marijuana, the scuttlebutt and the talk around the pool table was, why don't they just make it legal and tax the heck out of it? They're more concerned about being arrested than how much it costs. And the 3% is very nominal. We can't add more at this point, and less would be silly. So it's not going to push it to the back alley. That's always going to exist. It's just a matter that, what, what has happened is what the folks wanted. Decriminalization, not to be arrested, and, you know, a little bit of extra money to enjoy that privilege, I guess. There's no issue with that.
Okay. Any other comments? I did the doodling. 3 million 70% is 510,000, so that'd be 51,000 they're dividing up for, for that month.
Between 242 cities or some portion thereof that haven't outlawed.
However they decide that. Okay, so I will close the public hearing. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would move staff recommendation, which is to proceed to second reading for enactment of ordinance bill number 5-16 referring a tax on the Salem marijuana items to Salem voters for the November 2016 general election.
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Lewis to approve the staff recommendation? All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Motion passes. So now we move on to information reports, of which we have a bunch. We go through, these start for the public, these start with 6A, and they go through to 6J, so count that on your fingers. I don't know how many that is. We've got a few of them here. A lot of them have to do with, with land use issues. A is a hearings officer decision that approves an application to change the use of an existing building to doggy daycare, boarding, and training facility on Front Street. We have another that approves a proposal to validate two parcels within Hawthorne Industrial Park that were divided into separate tax slots in 2004. We have one that was denied, that was asking for a conditional use permit to allow multifamily use on some subject property in Ward 2. We have a planning administrator decision that approved a request for a two-year extension of a zoning adjustment for a residential care facility. I have another planning administrator decision that approved a two-year extension of a design review, a two-year extension of design review approval and a variance to setback in screening requirements for residential care facility. We have a planning commission decision that approved a consolidated two-parcel partition and comprehensive plan change to change the designation of the subject property from multifamily residential to single-family residential to match the current zoning in that area. We have a planning commission decision that approved a change of comprehensive plan map designation and zoning of property located at the northwest quadrant of I-5 and Kublai Boulevard to allow commercial development. We have purchases, we have a report that we receive monthly with purchases over $25,000 as a report to the, that the city has made in payments on contracts and those kinds of things that are large amounts for the council's review and knowledge. We have a park master plan projective, projected schedule. And finally, we have a summary report of the city's activities during the 2016 Oregon legislative session. So lots of information for the council. Counselor Bednarz and Counselor Dickey.
I have a question of staff on six, Item 6C, and it just had to do with the development of the property that was brought before, actually, this council on 23rd Street, south of Mission Street. Was there any difference between when it was brought to us before and at this time? Is it still housing units under the flight plan of the area of the airport?
Glenn Gross, I'm the Community Development Director. It was basically, again, a housing proposal, multifamily housing proposal. The site plan was changed some, but it was basically the same issues, the proximity to the city shops, proximity to the, the surrounding commercial services, and the, and the fact that it's, that it's under the flight path to the airport.
Okay, so that really not substantial changes from what it was before?
That's the way staff looked at it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dickey.
Thanks. I have a question on 6I, which is the park's master planning schedule. So thanks for doing this. It's kind of helpful to kind of get a big picture view of what's happening with all of our undeveloped city parks, and we have a number of them around the city. And my question specifically is regarding the community park, Stephen Josikai Park, which is a little bit of an interesting one because it sits between two schools. So it's a great big green space between two schools, and it looks like that would not be potentially master planned until 2020, so there's some time there. And there's currently a group of individuals who play cricket and have been looking for several years for a place to have a cricket pitch, which I just learned that's what it's called. It's not, I didn't realize that, so that's pretty, learn something new every day. So they have? So, they have found this area between Stevens and Yoshikai, and to them, this is the perfect place to do this, and so have asked, and it's something sort of similar to a baseball diamond area, and they're wanting to see what can be done to make that happen, including they're going out looking for some funding and that kind of thing. So, my question is, putting a use in this facility before it has a master plan, is that allowed, and can you just explain what that process would be?
Is that like a funding pitch?
You know, could be.
Keith Keever, Park Superintendent. Yes, that type of use would be allowed, because we'd call it an interim use. If it's a use that doesn't substantially change the existing condition of the site, we would generally allow it. The site is currently all turf, and there's a baseball diamond in the corner of it, so what we're talking about doing is just removing the outfield fence to allow that use. And it's very simple, the work we'd have to do, the turf is a little rough, and there's some holes and things we'd wanna fill in, but otherwise, it's ready to go.
Great, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Benjamin.
Again, on 6I, in regards to Brown Road Park, what is it gonna cost to have a master plan initiated and completed?
I wondered if that question would come up. We're gonna be asking council for funding for that next budget year, and we estimate it's gonna be about $30,000 to do the master plan.
$30,000 just to do a master plan? Okay, thank you.
Is that $30,000 a park?
No.
Or $30,000?
That's for a neighborhood park, a community or large urban typically is significantly more. There's more process involved.
Like Battle Creek?
Yeah, like Battle Creek, like Fairview.
So, I've got, there's a couple of parks in my ward, it looks like they've been sitting there for 40 years, 45 years, 1980 and 1981, so at what, how do you decide a hierarchy? A. B., when you say, well, there's gonna be almost 50 years by the time you get something done, the one on Sunnyside and Mildred, because it was started in '80 or '81, and you're pushing it forward to 2020. At what point do we say maybe that's not a good idea, A, or B, if you say we're gonna start the master planning for those parks in 2020, when could the neighborhood expect to see some progress and maybe a park opening up?
Yeah, that's a big challenge. As you see in the report, we have 11 undeveloped neighborhood parks alone, and yeah, there are two that have been there since early '80s, two you mentioned. The criteria we use, it's partly how old they are. Some of the older parks are not SDC eligible. They were part of a deficit park designation on the previous park comprehensive plan, and so that's one of the criteria. Another significant criteria we look at is how much area neighbors are asking for that park to be improved. We've done a lot of pre-development improvements on some of those parks, made a lot of improvements, and this list often settles out based on who's screaming the loudest, quite honestly.
So, one more question. Thanks, Daniel. This comes up, and this is a discussion at one of my neighborhood association meetings, and frankly, I'll describe it, was TJ Sullivan, who was in this, in my position as a counselor for eight years in the early 2000s, and TJ said, maybe it's time to not quit looking at these parks in the traditional way that we've done. It's clear we don't have enough money to do, to build all these parts out in the traditional way. We've always done it, and maybe we have to start looking, you know, at different approaches. And the one he threw out was Mildred and Sunnyside, where it's used as basically neighborhood gardens throughout the year, and if you go there in the summer, that's probably as busy a park as there is in the city, literally, with, you know, everybody's planting their little gardens, and there's people everywhere, children and families, and it's busy all day long on the weekends and evenings, and it's probably as well-used or more well-used than a lot of parks that are, you know, the standard park. That's one thing, or whether it's walking pass, or whether it's looking at, you know, the bicycle kind of a thing, which is easier development, less expensive, probably less expensive maintenance. I think we started, have to start looking at different approaches, and they're still parks, they're still used for the public, they're just, if we can't afford what we're doing, and we can find ways that are less maintenance, that still provide a segment of the population with something they're asking for, I think we need to be looking at those kinds of things.
Yeah, well, Counsel, we appreciate that comment. In fact, you know, the term that we use, pre-development, is exactly that. You know, we own a lot of properties, there's property that's gonna be used for cricket. There's a state property that's being used for rugby. There are properties out in your end of town that are being used for community gardens, so we're open to that, because the big issue for developed parks is that we're already understaffed and underfunded, so we've brought a lot of them online, but we still struggle with how do we continue to maintain them. So, yeah, we are absolutely open to those ideas, and in fact, have used those ideas and have allowed those kinds of uses. So, then the issue of, yeah, these master plans, I think these master plans are still important. I think we still wanna have them in place. As council wants to move forward with developing parks, we need to understand what the property is gonna be developed as ultimately, but there's clearly no big hurry for that very reason.
Okay, well, and I would say, is the master park plan linked in with the budget? In other words, there's a difference between a plan that's doable because you've identified funding for it and a wish list that maybe we're never gonna get to.
Well, so there's two things, and I want to make sure that we're clear. The comprehensive park system master plan is the overall guidance document, and we need to have that, because we have parks' SDCs, and we need to have that so we can understand when we want to acquire properties, and, you know, as we look, you know, we don't wanna find ourselves in a situation where we stopped acquiring properties, we just allowed development to proceed, and then all of a sudden, we want to build a park, and there's no land available. So, it's important to have, and that master plan's in place, council's already adopted that. What's before you is just sort of the list of now the property master plans, and we think they are worthwhile to do, and they're worthwhile to have in place, and that's why Keith talks about, you know, a lot of this list, and the priorities are driven by, you know, the push from neighbors, because neighbors may find money, or neighbors may come to council and say, we would like to bring this park online, or that kind of thing. But at the end, you know, we really have to continue to have this policy discussion of, how many more do we bring online as, you know, some kind of either fully developed or somewhat developed with the issue of funding for maintenance?
Counselor Nankie, then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, you mentioned former Counselor Sullivan, and he was a big part of that as well, because there was, you talk about the age of those, well, there was a ton of those, and we were doing nothing. And what, 10 years it's been since we started, and we made it actually a goal to actually try to do a park a year.
Right, and we've done that, right. We did that for many years.
And we've come a long way, and at that same time, we broke that up and went into the phased approach, where people aren't just screaming, yeah, there's that empty lot that has the sign future home of park that's fallen down and eroded, to where it's at least, you know, flat and level, to where people can use, it has some beneficial use, and then we just kinda step it up. So, we've come a long way in parks, and thank you for the report, and...
Thank you. I'd invite you, I just toured Iola Ridge Park, which was just recently, came online, and it literally is a small parking lot, just off the street, one pathway that links Dan Avenue out to Iola, two picnic tables, two benches, and just some lawns that are easy to mow, and it's beautiful. And then, there's a creek that runs through it, and the Glen Grips and Watershed Council is working on rehabbing some of that, and we've worked on rehabbing that, and it's just a great location to enjoy. There are no playgrounds, nothing much else. It's a nice connection, and just a beautiful piece of property that's just cleaned up and available for enjoyment. So, yeah, so we may see just that kind of simple, so you can go play.
Minimals, yeah.
And if I can add to that, we used parks' SDCs for that first phase of Iola Ridge, so we do have funding available to some level on a lot of these.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I wanna add some comments to I, and then also, I wanna talk about the Oregon legislative report. A meeting, or at least two meetings back, we were presented with the proposal to swap lands with the school district, and I was reminded of that when Counselor Dickey was talking about Yoshikai Stevens Park, and that may have been one of the ones where something was going on, and, you know, we asked you to come back with some more information, and I'm wondering how that fits in with the park master planning, and what's gonna happen if we actually do approve some swaps where there are no park, you know, it's not our park anymore.
Yeah, this list is, there are two answers. One, this list is consistent with that agreement, so that we're not planning for something that we've come to terms with the school district that we're gonna give away or something, so...
So, excuse me, Director, it's consistent with the proposal that was given to us that we asked for more detail?
Correct. Now, on that, what council asked us to do was to first go out to neighborhoods and make sure that they were aware, so we're working on that, and our plan is to have a work session with council, I believe it's late May, where we've invited the school district to attend as well. You know, everything that council asked for, we're working on. It'll be late May, early June, and then we'll be back.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I also add my voice to the council who said, I appreciate this plan. It's good to see it all laid out. Now, if I may, I wanna move to the summary report of the city's activities during the legislative session.
You may, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much. And the comment I wanna make is about the inclusionary zoning bill, and, you know, the alternate on the legislative committee, and I spoke about inclusionary zonings when, at the meetings I attended, and I think it's good that the ban on inclusionary zoning was lifted, but I also understand that there, in order to get the ban lifted, there had to be a pretty much consensus among the development, the real estate, the builders, the people in favor of lifting, or favor of inclusionary zoning. So, it talks about the, the city can provide incentives and legislation and rules and regulations, so I'm sure that that's what we're looking forward to do as the city staff, and I would be very interested in seeing what proposals the staff has that can allow development and be fair to the developers, but also be fair and include affordable housing and inclusionary zoning in a way we can do this. So, I look forward to receiving that information from the staff. Thanks.
Hey, any more comments? We will move on, there are no...
Mr. Chair?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just a quick one, in 6G regarding the Kubler interchange development agreement. I just wanted to thank staff for the level of, the quality of the answers in regards to neighborhood association concerns as well, and then just make note that having that neighborhood plan updated was critical to actually not having this probably be a knock-down, drag-out, and so look forward to the rest of them all coming online as well, so just thank you much.
So, I would echo those comments. Thank you, Counselor Nankie. Our two neighborhood associations got together to discuss that, had several meetings together to understand it and sort of move together as one to, you know, speak, so thank you for that. Okay, we're to ordinances now. There are no first readings. Recorder, read the second reading.
Ordinance Bill number 416, an ordinance allowing drive-through uses in the Broadway-Hi Street retail overlay zone, amending Salem revised code sections 613.015, 613.020, and 613.030.
Okay.
Counselor McCoyd?
No.
Counselor Dickey? Counsel Benjamin?
Yay.
Counsel Benarz?
Yay.
Counsel Lewis?
Yay.
Counsel Bennett?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
No.
Counselor Nankie?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Dickey?
This is the second read. The maps.
Aye.
Thank you. So, the motion passes? 6-3. Do we have any public comment? Hey, Tim Cowan. So, welcome. You're an old pro at this, so I will ask you to proceed.
Mayor Pro-Tim, City Council, my name is Tim Cowan, 3160 Dogwood. I believe I'm in Bednarz Ward. If not, I've gotta take your side and down, okay? One thing on the crosswalks, the one by Mission and Church, I believe I have the streets correct, where there's a little island by Bush House?
Yeah.
I brought up the fact that if someone's on island, are they in the crosswalk? So, if someone's walking across, they come in the island, are they still in the crosswalk to keep going on?
Yeah.
And I think if there's a question, then there's gonna be for drivers, and someone might be on island looking at a car, thinking they're gonna stop. The other thing you might wanna consider is the speed, you know, taking it down to maybe the speed of a school zone. I'm gonna wait and hold most of my testimony until the survey comes back. However, I just wanted to go over my credentials just for a second. With First Interstate Bank, I was responsible for all business relationships west of the Mississippi that had headquarters outside of the state but have operations in the state, like a Boeing. My loans were about $630 million, and then I was the senior vice president, regional manager for First Interstate Bank, had Mid-Wilent Valley, Central, and Eastern Oregon. Assets were about $1 billion, 52 branches, 700 employees. So, I thought that maybe one of the things I could do to help with the bond issue is if I just looked like it, I was making a credit decision on $40 million. Then that way, I would ask questions and so on, and give you some feedback on would I grant the credit or not based, I need this type of criteria. What I would need to know, at least at first, would be, what is the project's delivery approach, both from complexity, cost control, will there be availability for modification of any bids? Will the approach provide a commitment for cost and budget demands? If the seismic retrofit of the current city hall and construction of new police facility are packaged in the bond issue? And where do priorities of spending project dollars on safety of the city staff and public visitors to city hall versus spending project dollars on the police operations? Should the bid results are higher than the construction estimates for the project? And then last, do the parties involved have the financial strength and/or flexibility to adjust to unexpected issues? And does the project allow for incremental cost increases? I would have to know all that before I could make any type of credit decision on it. And I would be willing to look and review at some of the documentation and so on, and tell you, here's what I would need to have to approve it.
Hey, Tim, your time's up. Should you wrap her up?
I'm sorry?
Could you wrap it up? You're at the red light, hats, come on.
I'm done, sir.
Okay. Questions?
All that information will be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Okay, we move along. There is no new business, no mayor's items?
Does she have any public comment on the council's items?
She's missed her time in the dinner, but she will allow it.
Yes, we will allow it, sure.
If you'll take a minute and give your opinion on it.
Good evening. Margot Lucas, West Salem Cannabis. I just wanted to speak to Diana Dickey's item on the agenda, which is in regard to marijuana grows here in the city. Previously, the Planning Commission did approve... Previously, the Planning Commission did approve marijuana grows in the industrial commercial zone. And Diana's going to be speaking about that, I believe. And I just wanted to lend my support to that. I do believe that we should be allowed to do it in the industrial commercial zone. There could be additional buffers, if those were some of the concerns that were discussed previously here at council, when we first rejected the industrial commercial zoning. And I would also support the industrial park zoning as well. I had another issue that I wanted to speak to, but I guess I won't since it's not on the agenda.
Thank you. Questions? Nope. We will move to councilors' items. Council Dickey, to your item.
Yes, thank you. So I move that council asked staff to bring back options to council on how to best allow commercial growing of recreational marijuana in IC and IP-zoned lands.
Second. Okay. Moved by Council Dickey, second by Council Anderson to instruct staff to look at ways to include IC zones and marijuana-growing operations.
So I brought this forward because after we had significant discussion last fall about how we were going to allow the zoning, and, you know, we got the recommendation from the Planning Commission, it appears that there's at least a couple of different existing grow operations that had been planning on moving into recreational that are in these zones. So they've already, they've been there for a while, people don't even really realize they're there. Seems like it might be good fit for them in the locations that they're in. So it wouldn't necessarily be my intention that it's just a blanket, you know, this is always an allowed use in an IC or IP zone. But I'd like to see what options staff can come back with for a conditional use process for these areas, maybe taking into account some of the things that we discussed previously, some of the concerns with buffers, especially around residential areas, that kind of thing. And I just think that, you know, I mean, we just, I don't know, how long did we spend trying to figure out how we divide up a dollar and 70 cents over this marijuana issue that is such a new thing for all of us? And it has been, it's been an issue that's been before us now over the last couple of years. And it seems like every step in this process, we're learning something new, some new thing that we hadn't anticipated comes up. So I'd like to see if there's an opportunity to create a conditional use process for these areas. But interested in the discussion if there's other, what other councilors think.
Council Anderson.
Thank you very much. I certainly support this. I supported IC zones to begin with, so I think this is a good thing to look at. And Council Dickey informed me earlier that one of these potential sites is in my ward, which is another reason for me to support. You know, obviously, we're not going to go back and change it, change the IC decision, but there ought to be some sort of process where, especially where businesses that are already located there could have some relief from the blanket, you can't do it in this zoning. So I support the motion.
Council Lewis?
Actually, my comments were the same as Council Anderson, so good enough.
Okay, Council Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, I've spoken to gentlemen that's in Ward Two as well a couple times, and they put out significant quantities of money. That being said, this is all in regards to permissiveness. And if the federal government would just get off their duff, and since I swore an oath to them, I'll be in opposition to the motion.
You're nothing if not consistent, Council Nanki. Council Bednarz?
I didn't realize this. I knew it was going to be on the agenda, but I thought maybe we had settled the issue of the zones up to this point. I think at this point, what you're asking is just the direct staff, well, we're going to hold a conversation about the matter. It's not that this is going to go through. There'll be an opportunity. I'm really concerned about those properties, residential, whether it's RM1, 2, or RS, that are abutting IP and IC zones. And I had asked actually our mayor temp to have at this point, one of those slides, the PowerPoint presentations that kind of showed the area of the city of Salem, where all those, well, if it was IC zone, this is what it would include. And I think that'll come in the next discussion after this. If we approve this and just hold the discussion, we can still say no, we can still say yes. But I think it's worth having a discussion at this point.
Yeah, it's interesting. And again, as I said to Mr. Flynn, it's one thing being theoretical, it's another one when it gets to practicalities here. And we've got folks with substantial investments that have been operating, so clearly, they're not being disruptive in the areas they're in. But you get, probably my Council Bednarz and my ward, there's not a lot, and the ICs are just little strip malls, right, surrounded by, you know, houses and multifamily units. So we're concerned about that. But I think there has to be a happy medium. I agree with that, and I would support this motion. Any more discussion? Okay?
This is Anna, the mayor. Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, good, all right, because I can only hear you some of the time. I guess my concern about this motion is that I thought that long ago, we were sort of letting the people know who were involved in the medical marijuana retail sales, that they should not assume that we were going to do something similar for the recreational, and that they should be, they would be wise to not make investments and move ahead until we had set the parameters and made the decisions that they then would follow. So I feel it's unfortunate that these individuals have gone forward and invested a lot of money and made plans. But hey, we never did promise that we were going to make things exactly the same for recreational that we did for medical. So I'm going to vote against the motion.
Okay. So, okay, no more comment? Let's ask for the vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Peterson voting no?
And Nanki and Benjamin. So the motion passes 6-3. And that is the end of the agenda, seeing no more business. This meeting, the Salem City Council, is adjourned.